You're ready? Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the meeting to order at 7:11. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to thank everyone for coming tonight. Sorry we were a little bit late. Executive session ran a little late. Is there a motion to seal the executive session minutes from tonight?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes 4-0. And tonight in an executive session, we did approve 11 homeschooling requests, and those were approved 5-0. It's now time for open forum. Is there anyone that would like to speak? Okay then. We are moving on to oral reports. Do any school committee members have a report to give? Not expected in the summer. Okay, on to the superintendent's report.
Great, thank you, Timmy. We are looking forward to our opening. So as a reminder, students start right after Labor Day, and then the rest of our teachers come in for convocation and professional development days on Tuesday. So we've had a very busy summer. So first of all, I want to thank Steve and his crew for all the amazing work that they have done to get our schools ready. We've had, you know, several construction projects. We've had all sorts of renovations, you know, all the things that are in our capital plans, you know. And while we're in our last flurry of getting everything ready for sure, the schools look beautiful. We have amazing maintenance and custodial staff that are really have gone above and beyond. Also, thanks to Giulio and his crew. They have done some amazing work this summer, installing all sorts of new wireless access points across all of the schools, getting all of our computers ready to go, refurbishing, kind of renewing, getting the new computers out to students who are changing grades. So really, again, that tech work is the kind of thing that, you know, if you don't notice it, means that everything went right. And, you know, they do an amazing job. And likewise, to our transportation, who you'll hear from tonight, you know, making sure that all of our buses are ready to go. And finally, to our HR staff and to finance, to Lauren, Emily Sweeney, who's not here. They do an amazing job. We have many new teachers. Not many, but we have several new teachers coming in this year. We highly competitive fields. We, I'm very excited about the new teachers who are going to be joining our district. They came from across the state, a range of ages and experience. So we will have them in in a fall school committee meeting, so you all get to meet them. But we are really excited for them. Lauren Durney and Gail Dandrian. Lauren Durney is our, our coach. She runs their orientation. Gail oversees that, and they do a really great job with that. The big news, which you'll be voting on in a little bit, is that we've done our peer principal search. And so you all will be voting on Emily Chardier's contract this evening. So congratulations to Emily. We're really excited for Emily to be here with us. She is, has been serving as the dean of students at the, at the middle school. Emily brings almost two decades of experience to the, in Narragansett to the school. She has done a fabulous job working with students, working with parents, working with teachers. She's an expert in curriculum development, has a great way of developing relationships with students. You know, at a highly competitive field of many sitting administrators. So congratulations to Emily. We're really proud of her. So, all right, and that's my report.
So, any questions for Dr. Cummings? So I don't have a question, just a comment. So most certainly agree with everything that you said about all of the hard work. Certainly takes a strong learning community all the way from, you know, every integral part, from the custodial team, the clerical team, teachers that work summer school, the principals, central office staff. But a big thank you to Pete, too, because it, it, the leadership at the top is what makes everything work and safe and efficient and all of that hard work in the summer. So it's a thank you to you, but obviously a thank you to the whole Narragansett learning community. But a big thank you to your leadership, Pete.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, so we are on to consent agenda. Is there a motion to accept the recommendation the superintendent to approve consent agenda items CA 1B, CA 2A, CA 2B? You want to move the motion?
Oh, so moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes four zero. On to the budget report. Karen?
Good evening. Expenses for the month ended July 31, 2024. Total $1,174,391. That's 3.18% of our budget. And our expenditures and encumbrances for the same time period, total $19,485,614. And that's 52.83% of our budget.
Thank you. Any questions for Karen?
Nope. Summer's a cheaper month than usual.
All right, thank you. So we're on to school committee business. Item number one. Is there a motion to accept the recommendation the superintendent to approve the date change for the January school committee meeting in 2025 from Wednesday, January 15th, one week later to Wednesday, January 22nd?
So moved.
Second.
Any reason for the change, Pete?
Thank you, Timmy. So the way that the calendar falls this year is actually the, the first Wednesday of the month is actually January 1st, which we did not account for in our first kind of output of the break, of the meeting schedule. And so that does throw us a little behind during the budget process. And so this is an accommodation to help us with some of our budget meetings that we need to get done through that process. So the change is appreciated.
Because it'll be like the second week, not the, okay.
Correct.
Yeah, the January, that date did seem early. So January 22nd has a more natural feel to it.
Yes. It, it will help us in terms of, you know, kind of our regular business meeting, making sure that we have everything ready for, both ready for the meeting and if there are any policy changes or anything that we need to do, it gives time to do the final preparations for that.
All right. Any discussion or any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes four zero. On to item number two. Is there a motion to accept the recommendation the superintendent to approve the 2024-2025 district-wide handbook for the Narragansett school system?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
Aye. We have one committee member who's currently not here who expressed interest in commenting on this. I remember a motion that we hold it until next meeting, if we can. We really can't.
So let's kind of talk this through here. So Pete, give us a high-level overview of what is, what is the handbook and the purpose of it? You know what I mean? Like, so people know what, what it is. Because that's a, that's a, that's a big decision to move something as a courtesy to one person when there's four of us here.
That's true.
So let's, what is it in front of us that you're looking for our support on, Pete? What did?
So the, no problem. So the student handbook is the, really the, the rules and regulations and the piece and kind of how we, the, the codes of how we live, right, in our schools. And so there's everything from the disciplinary code in there to kind of school start times, to our academic policies, to like all of those pieces that really are kind of the, the regulations of school. And so to, the reason that we do this in August is so that those rules are really in effect when students come to school in September. And so, you know, I will say to you, there are very minor, mostly grammatical changes. There are no significant changes to the student handbook this year as opposed to previous years. The only update that I would say is that there is a slight adjustment to the middle school athletic policy because middle school athletics have become a part of the Rhode Island Interscholastic League. And so eligibility to participate in middle school sports now echoes and is more similar to the requirements for eligibility in high school. And again, the whole idea is we want as many kids participating as possible, right? So it's kind of a, a minimum amount of classes that you need to be passing in order to participate in sports. And what we've found over time is, quite honestly, when kids participate in sports, their grades go up. And so, you know, that, that was a very minor change. You know, some kind of reorganizing of information, so it was more clear and easier to read. But there were no significant changes to anything other than that within the handbook. And so, you know, again, I have not gotten any feedback in terms of kind of what the, the questions or changes might be previous to the meeting. And so, you know, I would be happy to answer any of those questions. But I'm unaware of any concerns at this time. And so, you know, we certainly have our principals here to answer any specific questions that members of the committee might have about the handbook or any of the school rules or regulations that are in there.
Nope. I'm all set.
So I just have a comment. I love the formatting of it because in years past, each school did their own handbook, and it was just all over the place with, you know, how even the, the structure and everything. So I think it's really succinct. I think it's really helpful, especially for parents that have kids in multiple buildings, and there's only three schools. And I think it's important to have kind of that consistency and clear expectations all spelled out. I think it looks fantastic. I think it's very comprehensive. It's very detailed. It's organized. It's succinct. It's easy to find information. I think it's fantastic. Does anyone else who's here have any, you know, either high level or even specific, like, oh, on page 17, I don't understand this, or whatever? Any comments or questions or anything?
No, I just want to echo what you said. Of all the, I remember when it was three different ones at one point, and this is very well done. So, and like, I did ask Peter when, like, what did change? Because I couldn't, you know, it was so, like, minor changes, so.
And again, this isn't a school committee policy. It's like when the high school presents their program of studies with their courses. They bring it to us. We can review it. We can ask questions. We can give feedback. We can give suggestions. And sometimes, you know, the principal may say, you know what, I actually really like that. I'm going to reformat. Or you know what, that's a great point. I actually forgot to include this. Or, oh, I see that that's not in there. Sure, I can add another category with that. So, and that's all of our job is, is to give suggestions or recommendations, but they have to be specific. So it can't be, I don't like the handbook. You know, it has to be, I don't think you included enough information about special services or about the dress, whatever it is. You have to be specific. And it can be as specific as, on page 20, the drop-off pickup thing is unclear to me. I think parents might have trouble understanding that or whatever. It has to be specific. So what I can do, Alex, because we don't have the full committee here, I can certainly send an email to say, you know, we did kind of vote to support the handbook. However, if any members have any specific questions, send them to Pete and reply all because it, you know, the principals can take that under consideration and.
Oh, yeah. And certainly, like, like you said, this is a handbook. This is not the policy. We can always, we're always reviewing policy in theory as committee members.
Right.
Yeah.
And always making suggestions.
And, and just to make sure that we're really clear for people watching at home. So the handbook is based on Narragansett school district policies, right? And so this is basically the, the regulations that interpret those policies and how those policies will be put into play within the schools. And so if there is a concern over a policy or if there is a question about a policy, that's certainly something within the purview of the committee to examine that policy, make suggest, you know, make changes should you wish to do so. And likewise, you know, I am and I know the, the principals of each building are really open to feedback on the handbook and on policies. And, I mean, on regulations. And so if there are questions, we're happy to clarify and to, you know, receive that feedback so that we can continue to improve what we do.
Perfect.
And I think, you know, that's a good point. It's not our job to live in the land of the details. It's to stay at the high level of policy. So if there's something that, you know, we think can be improved, it's our job to let Pete know that, you know, I'd like to learn more about our suspension policy or our dress code policy, whatever. And then Pete can share that information with the five of us. And if need be, the actual school committee policy, number 1B, six, whatever, can go to Diane and I in the subcommittee, and then we can bring it back. And if there's changes in the policy level that may impact next year's book.
Correct. So if there are changes at, at the policy level, then that would necessitate changes in the handbook.
Okay. Cool. Can we vote?
Sounds good. So any other comments or questions before we vote?
No, just as always, really impressed with the high-level overview of just about anything you could possibly think of that's school-related. It's a very user-friendly handbook, and I found it very insightful and very easy to follow and appreciate all the efforts from all of our representatives from each of our public schools on their feedback. And I know that there's a lot of time and energy that goes into the review of this handbook every year. So, you know, the school still functions in the off-season. There is no off-season to run a school district. So really appreciate all the efforts all around. I just have one minor grammatical thing, but I'll just share that after. It's.
So I find it hard to believe that you found something that, that.
I, I know. And I'm sure it's on her list.
First time for everything.
But thank you for that.
All right. So let's take a vote, then. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes four zero. On to item number three. Is there a motion to accept the recommendation the superintendent to approve the 2024-2025 bus routes for the Narragansett school system?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
I'd like to invite Steve and Derek up just really quickly to give you a quick overview of how we design our bus routes. You know, again, there is a lot of work that goes into these. And so I'll hand it off then. I'm more grateful for their hard work on this.
Hi. Not much has changed since last year. Last year, we had some pretty big changes with, with moving some routes around, mostly in the north end. This year, we had one, I would say, one change, one noticeable change, and that was simply to even out two bus routes that happen to be next to each other. Route one was a little, getting a little long, adding neighborhoods. And route four actually lost a few neighborhoods, and they, they run, they run parallel to each other. So we just took one small neighborhood off of one and put it on four. Other than that, everything's pretty much as it was last year, which worked well from the changes we did the year before.
So just as a reminder to the committee, right, several years ago, when we changed our school start times and the high school and the middle school start at the same time, you know, the high school and middle school students do ride the bus together, right? So we have not had really any significant issues with that. And so our drivers and Derek do a good job monitoring those pieces. You know, one thing I am going to ask Steve just to give a quick overview on, and I apologize, Steve, I didn't give you a full heads-up on this, is just a brief mouthful on the traffic pattern at the high school because we had some significant construction, and there's going to be a new traffic pattern at the high school. So if you could just talk one second about that.
So in the front, in the high school, when you entered now, the, in the teacher faculty visitor lot, that has become a two-way entryway that's pushed further out towards South Pier Road so that it just flows traffic into the travel lane. So now, instead of a stop, it's a merge. The only stop sign now is on the south side of the building where maintenance is. When you come around the building, there'll be tons of signage, and I will have people out there on opening day to direct and get people comfortable with the pattern.
So, thank you, Steve.
We're currently lining arrows and directional's on the ground right now to make it easier for people to get around. It added additional spots. It added a retention drainage system to receive all the salt and sand coming off the parking lots. So it's a, it's a nice setup. It came out very nice.
And we'll do a review of all the summer projects. The reason I bring it up now with two things. So one, it has to do with transportation. So Chris and Steve Connor are going to be putting out letters to the high school community, right? Because we have a lot of young drivers there who are used to kind of things being a certain way. So we're going to make it, you know, really obvious with, it's hard to imagine what we're just describing it in the air, right? With lots of visuals and lots of pieces. So when you arrive, go this direction, and giving very solid maps. The second reason, and, and what it has to do with our bus routes is, you know, and I will remind the, the committee and just kind of make the community aware, we always have some bus delays the first couple of weeks of school, okay? We have, A, there's still a lot of summer traffic around. And so Boston Neck Road becomes very crowded for us sometimes when it's a nice day and, and there's lots of beach traffic around. Two, we have lots of youngsters that are maybe taking the bus for the first time. Remember, we have preschoolers that also take the bus, right? And so, you know, we do have a lot of delays with that. And then three, we have students who are new to their schools. And so ninth graders and fifth graders finding their buses. And so that sometimes delays us as well. And we have new drivers. And so those first couple of weeks, you know, just expect some delays if things are very. If things are very, very delayed, we do reach out to parents and make sure that they are aware so they don't get worried. But I just want to put that out there.
You forgot an important number four. URI kids go to their eight o'clock class the first month of September.
That is true.
That extra traffic, but that weans out after a couple of weeks.
It sure does. And I'm appreciative to Narragansett Police Department, who does some great enforcement around respecting our buses and respecting the, the stop signs for the buses and making sure our kids are safe. They do a wonderful job at that.
Well, I think that sounds great, very thorough. And is this on the website yet or will be soon?
The bus routes or?
Yeah, the bus routes.
No, it's pending your approval.
Okay.
Then we can get it on, I would imagine.
Write it.
Yeah.
All right, sounds great. Any other questions or comments about the bus routes?
Just that there's a typo on this page with the AM.
Yes, I got a forward from.
Before it goes public.
Thank you. Yeah, it's already been fixed. Thank you.
Oh, it has? Okay.
I mean, not on your copy, but.
Oh, okay.
The one that's going to go out.
Any other questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes four zero. Thank you for your work on this.
Yes, thank you.
So the last business item, number four. Is there a motion to accept the recommendation, the superintendent, to approve the 2024 through 2026 contract for the Narragansett Pear Middle School principal, effective August 22nd?
So moved.
Second. Discussion?
So I said a few words about Emily in my superintendent's report. I also just want to make sure that, you know, we're making you all aware of the process that we went through. So it was a very competitive field. We had about 15 applicants for the position. Many sitting principals. We had several rounds of interviews. We did have parents, students, and staff and faculty, all on the committee, who all had a lot of, of great input. Our candidates had to complete performance tasks, including observation of instruction and giving feedback to that observation, as well as taking kind of a data-driven problem that the school could potentially be facing and coming up with a, a solution on how to address that issue in a comprehensive way. Emily, you know, was a star throughout the whole thing. We're really excited to have her kind of grow into this leadership position. As a reminder, she did a great job as interim principal last fall. And we're looking forward to seeing her full-time in the position.
And so I just have a, a comment, and it's really just a congratulations. We're always very pleased when there is an internal candidate who is exceptional and stands above all of the external candidates. And we know that it's a very rigorous process to go through, a little nerve-wracking and very intense. And you just, you know, came out high, high marks above all the other candidates. So we're thrilled when there's an internal person that can learn and grow and move into this position. And I know you have wonderful support with the other building principals and with Pete, and a lot of confidence and optimism from the teaching staff and the parents and the kids. So we're very excited about this hire, and I think it's fantastic. So with that, we'll take our vote. All those in favor?
Could I just comment?
Oh, sorry. Sorry.
I mean, we can get right into it, but I just wanted to add, you know, I know Pete runs a very tight ship. And, you know, just to echo the sentiments that have already been shared, I think it's really remarkable and refreshing that we're hiring from within. But to be clear, there was no special privileges here. You know, it was a proper vetting procedure done from the start. And to see the final two candidates, one of them being from within the Narragansett school system, I think speaks volumes to the leadership that we already have here in the Narragansett schools. I've worked with Emily on the Health and Wellness Committee. I've seen her in action on the portrait of a graduate. And to see her leadership firsthand, I think we can all learn a lot from her. And I fully support the recommendation, Pete, and applaud that we can celebrate this opportunity to recognize someone from within.
All right, we ready to vote? Okay. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes four zero. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Dude, would you, you took the time to be here. Would you like to say anything or? No pressure there. We just need a three-minute speech. This is, we'll give you a rubric. It's going to be graded on a scale of one to four.
So as part of the interview process, they ask you if you have a closing statement. So I'm going to go back to that closing statement. Last year, when I was interim principal, I did a little thing with my faculty where we got fortune cookies that kind of like was our fortune for the year. And mine was endurance and preservation, perseverance will be rewarded. So I can attest to having almost 20 years here, having the opportunity to go through many different roles and seeing some of my students serve on school committee. You know, it's been a, a great journey, and I am thrilled to continue it in Narragansett.
Congratulations.
Okay, well, with that, are there any communications that anyone wants to mention? So our next school committee meeting will be here September 18th at 7:00. Is there a motion to adjourn at 7:40?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?